Mark, can you just let me know if we're on the record, please? All right, awesome, thank you. All right, November 1, 2024. I'm going to call the matters involving Mr. Pickering. Mr. Pick- Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Pickering? Are you ready? Why don't you come forward, sir? You can come on up and have a seat right here at this table. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, night, ma'am.
I'm well, thank you. Good. And I'm just gonna, um, why don't you bring that mic down a bit? And then you'll- And sir, can I ask your name?
Steve Moore.
All right. Are you appearing as his attorney?
No, no, I'm not. Seth Borg's from the attorney.
Okay. No, that's great. All right. Um, all right, we are on the record. City of Inglewood, Jefferson County, Colorado. As I said, November 1, 2024. This is regarding an appeal of notice of ex- ex- ejection, excuse me, exclusion. There are two different notices that were issued. One issued date of alleged violation October 17th and the second October 21st. Both notices were appealed by Mr. Pickering. Notice of appeal hearings were issued on October 28th, setting those hearings for today's date at this location. Mr. Pickering, can you tell me your first names and state your first name so I know how to pronounce it properly?
It's Zephaniah.
Zephaniah, all right, thank you. And Pickering is P-I-C-K-E-R-I-N-G.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Sir, are you ready to proceed to hearing today?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I saw you were sitting in the back during part of the last hearing. Generally, what will happen is city will call witnesses to testify. Anyone who testifies will do so under oath. And once the city's witness is done testifying, you have the option, if you'd like, to ask questions of that witness. And the hearing, of course, is being recorded. Any questions for me about that general?
No, ma'am.
General at lay here. These proceedings are governed by Section 1143 of the Inglewood Municipal Code, in particular subsection four, which relates to the hearing procedures. And paragraph 4C provides, "The city has a burden of proof to show by preponderance of the evidence that the person issued the exclusion committed the rule violation that the issuance duration and condition of the exclusion are lawful." All right. Any preliminary matters from the city?
Yes, hearing officer, one. So my understanding is today the hearing is for two exclusion notices. One issued on, or one related to an incident that occurred on October 18th and the other for an incident that occurred on October 21st. Unfortunately, we found out late last night that the witness to the October 18th incident is unable to appear today. So we would ask pursuant to Inglewood Municipal Code for a continuance for good cause due to witness unavailability. And I'd be happy to provide a written request for that as well.
To provide a written-
A written request pursuant to-
Oh, okay.
And I apologize for the very late notice.
And who's the witness?
It is the witnessing officer of the event.
Oh, all right, all right. And that's for the October 18th alleged incident, is that right?
Yes, hearing officer.
Okay, all right. Ms. Pickering, city's asking the court, continue one of your hearings. Um, the incident, um, October 18th of 2024. Apparently, one of their witnesses is not available to testify. And so they're asking the court to, or the hearing officers, to continue that hearing. Do you have a position on that continuance? Sir, I'm happy to let you sit there. It's not a problem. You can in no way provide any guidance to him. So I understand he's an employee. I get it, you want to help him. So please don't. If you do, I'm going to have you just sit in that first row. All right? Thank you. All right, Mr. Pickering, do you know how you'd like to proceed? Do you have an objection to the request to continue?
No.
All right.
Is there any way we could get them both done, though, at the same time?
Does the city have an objection to continuing both hearings?
Can I confer at the client for one moment?
Of course, yeah.
Because these are two distinct incidents and everyone is present, we would ask that we could still have the hearing with regard to the second exclusion notice.
Okay. So city's position on that is they're ready to go on the second alleged incident. Witnesses are ready. You're here, I'm here, they're, they prefer to move forward. Or is there a reason? Is it just convenience that you'd like to have both heard at the same time?
Well, it is, ma'am. I mean, unfortunately, you know, I wanted to try to get them all done.
No, and I understand that.
So I ain't got to keep coming back, taking time off work to do so.
I completely understand.
Um, so by, you know, so I was going to meet him by going ahead and letting him continue it. But if we can't take care of all of them at the same time, it's still an inconvenience to me, ma'am.
Oh, and I get it. The, one of the challenges, sir, is pursuant to the municipal code provisions, there are really tight timelines on these types of matters and the appeals and when the hearings have to be held. So it's not unusual that a witness won't be available when notice of the hearing was issued just this Monday and today's Friday of the same week. So I'm going to go ahead and allow continuance of the matter involving the October 18th alleged violation. Um, let's look at a date for that when we're done with the hearing on the October 21st alleged violation. So we have a date tied down for that hearing. All right. Um, any other preliminary matters?
Not from the city.
All right. City have opening statement?
We can forego the opening and just reserve for close.
All right. Would you like to call your first witness?
Yes, hearing officer. And once again, I'm calling city attorney Tamara Niles.
Ms. Niles, I'll have you raise your right hand. And also for you, in before you have a seat, do you have a swear from under penalty, penalty perjury testimony about to give will be true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief? All right, thank you. All right, your witness.
Good afternoon, Ms. Niles. Can you please state your full name and spell your last name for the record?
Tamara Niles, N-I-L-E-S.
And are you employed?
Yes.
Who is your employer?
City of Inglewood.
And for how long have you been employed by the city?
Since June of 2021.
And what is your role with the city?
City attorney.
All right, thank you. Can you just explain some of your job duties and what you do on a day-to-day basis?
Yes, I generally attend all city council meetings and study sessions, draft legislation, draft municipal code, advise city staff on contracts and compliance with changes to statutes.
Okay, thank you. And were you working on the evening of Monday, October 21st, 2024?
I was.
And where were you working?
In this very room at the city council meeting.
Okay, I'd like to draw your attention to that evening approximately 7:00, 7:30 on that day. Did you notice any incident in particular or anything that happened?
Yes. So city council policies adopted by city council by motion during a regular meeting require that all videotaping occur at the back of the room, on the table marked media table or in that area. The provisions regarding filming have other restrictions, such as you can't run a power cord across a walkway or cause a tripping hazard, things like that. During that meeting, the mayor noted that Mr. Pickering, who's sitting here today, was recording from one of the benches in the middle of the audience in front of other people. And the mayor asked Mr. Pickering to please either stop recording or move his camera to the back of the room, to the media table, where council policies require recording devices to be located.
I'm going to stop you just for a moment. I'll ask you about that in just a minute. But do you recognize Mr. Pickering in the room today?
Uh, yes. It's the person sitting here at the table, I believe. I think he had a longer beard on that night.
Okay, thank you. Hearing officer, will the record reflect the witnesses identified? The appellant party, Mr. Pickering?
The record will so reflect.
All right. And if you want to continue with regards to the incident, will you reserve it?
Uh, yes. So the, um, I'm referring to the notice of ejection and exclusion that I drafted for Mr. Pickering of this incident to refresh my recollection.
And just to take one step back. So you testified that you did prepare the notice of exclusion with regard to Mr. Pickering?
Yes. Yes, I prepared the notice of ejection exclusion for the incident on October 21st, 2024 at approximately 7:25 PM.
And let me provide you with my copy of it real quick. Can you just take a moment to review that? And let me know if that fairly and accurately represents the notice of exclusion that you wrote for Mr. Pickering?
Yes, it is what I wrote, except I don't believe I inserted the date of birth because I don't have access to people's confidential information.
Okay, thank you. Hearing officer, I would like to admit the exclusion notice issued to Mr. Pickering as exhibit, um, exhibit number two, but we can mark it as exhibit number one for clarity. So exhibit number one.
One, all right. Ms. Pickering, any objection to this coming in as evidence? This notice that you were served?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Exhibit one will be admitted. Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and change it to exhibit one then. Thank you.
Okay, so using that exhibit if necessary to refresh your recollection about what you observed, can you speak about the incident that you observed in the council chambers that day?
Yeah, so as I stated, Mr. Pickering was sitting in the audience and holding up a camera appearing to record. And the mayor had requested that Mr. Pickering either stop recording or move to the back of the room to record because that's what council policies require. Instead of doing one of those two options that are allowed by council policies, Mr. Pickering instead stood up and interrupted the meeting, spoke to the mayor and city council without being recognized to do so as perhaps someone could be during public comment. The mayor then asked Mr. Pickering to leave the meeting and he refused and continued to stand in the middle of the aisle during the meeting, speaking, and refused to exit the meeting when requested, continued speaking in the middle of the room, at which point the mayor announced the city council would take a recess because its meeting and its business were being interrupted by Mr. Pickering.
Hey, thank you. And had Mr. Pickering ever been recognized to speak or issue any sort of comment at the city council meeting?
No, I don't know if he had signed up, maybe for public comment for, to be recognized later. But no, he was not recognized as a speaker in any way and nor was he called to the podium to speak because he would, would have been out of order.
All right. And then going back to the mayor, you mentioned, you testified that the mayor asked Mr. Pickering to leave. Does the mayor have the authority to remove individuals from city council meetings?
Uh, yes. So he has authority from our charter, our municipal code and our council policies to maintain order during city council meetings. He's also been specifically designated by the city manager under CRS 18-9-110 as a person authorized to, or designated to maintain order during city council meetings.
All right, thank you. And after Mr. Pickering spoke and, you know, refused to leave in response to the mayor, did Mayor Ciara do anything in response? Did he call for recess?
Yes, he did. He did call for a recess. And the, I believe, two council members stayed in the room. The remaining city council members left the room. The meeting stopped at that point.
All right. And approximately, do you remember how long the recess lasted?
I don't recall exactly, perhaps 10 minutes, if I were to guess.
To the best of your recollection, about 10 minutes, give or take?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And then during the recess, did you, if you didn't already previously testify to this, did Mr. Pickering leave as instructed during the recess?
He did not.
What did Mr. Pickering do?
Mr. Pickering continued to stand in the middle of the aisle of the room, continued to speak. And he was, I briefly consulted with Division, In- Inglewood Police Department Division Chief Chad Reed, who was in the room. And then he walked over to Mr. Pickering and made contact with him.
All right, thank you. So did Mr. Pickering ever leave on his own?
He did leave. No one had to drag him out. Division Chief Reed continued to speak with Mr. Pickering. Several other police officers entered the room. And I believe there were four additional officers that entered the room. And Mr. Pickering did eventually walk out of the room of his own accord, surrounded by the police officers.
And would it be fair to say that he was escorted out by the police officers?
Yes.
Even if he wasn't physically?
Yes, but he wasn't in handcuffs.
Okay, thank you. Does the city of Inglewood routinely record its city council meetings?
Yes.
And do these recordings typically include the public comment periods of those meetings?
Yes.
To the best of your knowledge, was the city council meeting that took place on October 21st, 2024, recorded?
To the best of my knowledge, but I haven't specifically looked for it.
All right, thank you. And, but if it did, you would expect that it would include the public comment period that happened on that day, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Let me, for one moment, pull up another exhibit.
Will this be exhibit two?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Soon as I open. I just like the record to reflect. I'm attempting to pull up a video from the city council meeting. It's going a little bit slowly. And I believe the issue is that it was in a zip folder. So I'm currently extracting that.
Okay.
Apologies for the delay.
No, it's fine.
Hopefully. In the interest of time, I'll see if I can pull it up on YouTube itself and authenticate it that way. But then I will have a saved copy of the video to admit into evidence.
And we've got the IT guru approaching. I don't know if you can-
If the file was like eight gigabytes large.
And brings neighbors together. The 2024 Nevohead Input Grant Improvement Grants. Again, please limit your presentation to three minutes. Inglewood residents must provide your address or cross street.
I'm pause here. I'll have the record reflect, I skipped the video to one hour and 17 minutes and 45 seconds. The timestamp may be separate on the incidental video that I submitted to evidence with the hearing officer, but will provide the corresponding timestamps for that as well. Thank you, Mark. But, okay, so Ms. Niles, I'm just going to play this for a few moments.
Non-Inglewood residents must provide the name of your city. If you have dressed counsel in the last nine days, you will be moved to the bottom of the list. And written materials may be submitted to the city clerk in advance or at the meeting. Audiovisual materials must be submitted to the city-
All right, to your knowledge, Ms. Niles, is this an accurate recording of the public comment period for the 21st of October, 2024, Inglewood City Council meeting?
Yes, the mayor reads that same script before every public comment period.
All right, thank you. I'm going to skip ahead to when Mr. Pickering was asked to stop recording. And that- All right, let the record reflect, I'm skipping to one hour, 36 minutes and 30 seconds. It will show the end of someone else's public comment and then the start of Mr. Pickering's incident.
I, it's horrible. Have any of you ever attempted to help somebody get off the streets? It's damn near impossible. That list of resources is as useful as wiping your ass. Honestly, you get more use out of it and you're all so proud of it. I bet none of you have called a single one of those numbers for us, so. I've seen the way you've treated homeless advocates who stand here with loud mouths and you don't like, but who cares? You're the government.
Elizabeth, your three minutes are up. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for members of council? Seeing none. Elizabeth, thank you for your time tonight. Before we go to the next speaker, sir, I think you're recording, there's no recording allowed from the, uh, from the bench. If you do want to record, you can go to the back of the room to record from that spot, sir.
Oh, you're talking to me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Sir, so if you could just stop recording or move to the back of the room to finish your recording, you could do it at that point. Mr. Pinkerton, no, Mr. Pinkerton.
Sir.
Hey, call, call aboard, Mr. Pinkerton, I gave you the, uh, gave you the information to either, to either, to either go to the back of the room or, or turn off the equipment. So those are the two options, sir. All right, okay. All right, everyone, so I have asked Mr., uh, Mr., I believe it's Mr. Pinkerton. I may be wrong in terms of the name. Pickerling. I have asked you to turn off the recording, sir. You haven't done so. Sir, since you haven't turned off the recording, I'm going to ask you to leave, uh, leave this meeting. Mr. Pinkerling, I have asked you to leave the meeting.
Sir, sir, sir.
All right, everyone, I'm going to ask for a recess in order for, uh-
All right, so is this the incident you're describing in your testimony, Ms. Niles?
Yes.
Okay. And we, as we just heard, did the, who was the person who just asked to call the recess?
Uh, Mayor Ciara.
All right, thank you. I'm going to continue playing for a moment?
Pinkerton has not, Mr. Pinkerling has not left the meeting. Everyone, we're going to recess for a quick five minutes while this gets handled by the city attorney. Thank you.
All right, so at approximately one hour and 38 minutes and 15 seconds, the mayor called for a five-minute recess. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, and while the splash screen is up, do you recognize that voice you can hear in the background, Ms. Niles?
Uh, yes, that was Mr. Pickering.
And he, is he just continuing to speak during the recess?
Yes. And he continued to stand at the podium. And then I thought he had stood in the middle, back away from the podium for some time as well, while he was discussing with Division Chief Chad Reed.
All right, thank you.
And guess what? They, they got out of, out of a kind of military.
I just note for the record that at about one hour and 39 minutes and 25 seconds, the video does become muted and the splash screen stays on. So I'm going to skip to when the council readures. All right, so I'm skipping to one hour and 45 minutes and 52 seconds. Maybe a little bit further. So, so at about an hour and 49 minutes and two seconds into the video, council has read adjourned, to your knowledge, correct, Ms. Niles?
Yes.
And as far as the video goes, we can't see Mr. Pickering. So he did leave and you stated that he was brought out by Inglewood Police, correct?
Uh, yes, he did agree to leave and he was escorted by Division Chief Reed. And I think it was four patrol officers as well.
Okay, thank you very much. And hearing officer, I'd like to admit the video of the public comment period as exhibit two.
Ms. Pickering, any objection to admission of exhibit two, sir?
Well, um, the only thing I have to add about that, ma'am, is, is what this gentleman didn't show-
Let me stop you. Just procedural-wise, you'll have a chance to address all of that in just a minute or when we're done with this witness. My quick question is, do you have an objection to this video coming in as evidence?
No.
Okay, thank you. You'll have a chance to address any concerns, questions you have. All right, exhibit two will be admitted. Thank you.
Thank you, hearing officer. All right, I'm going to close the video for now. I'm going to skip and direct your attention back to the exclusion notice admitted as exhibit one. So you stated that you prepared this notice of exclusion?
Yes.
Did you personally issue this note of exclusion to Mr. Pickering?
Uh, no, I immediately drafted it based on what I had just personally observed while the, it was still fresh in my mind. And I emailed it to Inglewood Police Department. I think it was to Division Chief Reed because he was the officer in the room and requested that it be served on Mr. Pickering the next time they have contact with him.
All right, so to your knowledge, it was served by a police officer to Mr. Pickering?
Uh, yes, I believe it was served by Joffe's, uh, yes, by an officer based on the certificate of service.
And can you read on the certificate of service what it says with regard to who served it?
Uh, yes, it's, uh, J., is it? Hefler? I can't remember how he pronounces his last name. He's an officer, badge number 0004. Was served October 23rd, 2024 at noon.
All right, thank you. And- All right, thank you. And, um, would he have had the authority to issue an exclusion notice? Or to serve an exclusion?
Yes, under Inglewood Municipal Code, um, all city employees are authorized to serve exclusion notices.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna skip ahead, um, further into the notice of exclusion. Um, so what type of violation is identified by the notice of exclusion?
Uh, there's, uh, enlisted two Tier One violations, a disruptive activity behavior interfering with the normal use or operation, and another violation for, um, CRS eighteen-nine-one-ten during the city council meeting, and those were two violations. Um, the first one being failing or refusing to leave a public building upon request, uh, by a person charged with maintaining order in the building, and, uh, the second violation for, uh, disrupting, impeding, or hindering the normal proceedings of a legislative body.
All right, thank you, and I believe you may have testified to this effect, but are you familiar, as the city attorney, with the city councils, um, or the city's notice of exclusion process?
Yes.
And is this pro- oh.
Well, I was gonna say, my office drafted the form, and we also drafted the municipal code provision that governs the form.
Thank you. Um, and is this process based on the City of Inglewood Standards of Behavior Policy?
Uh, well, like, the standards of behavior is based on the municipal code provision that we drafted, yes.
Okay, thank you. And, but you're familiar with the standards of behavior policy?
Yes, my dra- office drafted it as well.
All right, thank you. I'm let the record flag. I'm gonna hand a copy to the Hearing Officer, um, the opposing party, as well as the witness.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can you take a moment to review that, um, please, Ms. Niles, and let me know when you're finished?
And this will be Exhibit Three, is that right?
Yes, Hearing Officer.
Thank you.
I'm finished.
All right, do you recognize the document I handed you?
Yes.
All right, well, what is it?
Uh, this is the City of Inglewood Standards of Behavior that governs conduct within, um, city buildings and city property.
All right, and it fairly and accurately represents the standards of behavior policy that your office drafted?
Yes.
All right, Hearing Officer, at this time, I request that the document you have before you is entered into evidence as Exhibit Three.
Mister Pickering, any objection to Exhibit Three being admitted, sir?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Exhibit Three will be admitted.
All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Niles, does the standards of behavior include a purpose statement?
It does.
What is the purpose of the policy?
Uh, it is to ensure that, uh, customers and community members, um, have appropriate conduct within, uh, city buildings and city facilities with an atmosphere of welcome, courtesy, respect, and business, and to protect the rights and safety of visitors, employees, and volunteers, and prohibit unreasonable interference with the use of city facilities.
All right, and, um, what buildings or where does this policy apply?
It applies to all city buildings, parks, open spaces, all city property.
All right, so do the standards of behavior apply to the city council chambers?
They do.
All right, thank you. Um, and the standards of behavior going back, I think you've mentioned they include two tiers of behavior that violate the policy?
Yes, Tier One, we consider more, um, minor offenses that may warrant an immediate ejection for twenty-four hours or a, a shorter exclusion period. Tier Two, we consider more, um, serious violations that warrant a longer time of exclusion.
All right, thank you. And is disruptive behavior included, um, as prohibited behavior by the city's standards of behavior policy?
Yes, it is the first prohibited behavior on Tier One.
All right, thank you. Um, and additionally, do the standards of behavior indicate that violating an applicable criminal law is prohibited?
Uh, yes, that's actually a Tier Two violation, and so it would warrant a longer exclusion.
Okay, thank you. And do the standards of behavior indicate or include a process for handling, um, violations?
Yes, uh, so a verbal warning may be given, but is not required. Uh, an injunction, um, may be given that requires immediately removal for the next twenty-four hours, and then an exclusion, uh, can be served that, uh, goes into effect after a short appeal period for, uh, starting at forty-five days for a Tier One violation and no prior exclusion in the last three years, and then it becomes longer based on, um, prior exclusions and if it's a Tier One versus a Tier Two.
Okay, thank you. And is this reference to the process, um, or is the no, this the notice of exclusion that Mister Pickering received based on these standards of behavior?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Was the, uh, Mister Pickering issued the notice of exclusion based on these standards of behavior?
Yes, he was.
Okay, thank you. Um, and for how long does, going back, I guess, to the exclusion notice itself, um, for how long was Mister Pickering excluded from the city council chambers?
Uh, for ninety days. Um, so I, I checked ninety days because I, uh, I knew this, I wanted to treat this as a Tier One violation because we wanted to limit, um, the period of time someone could not attend a city council meeting, and, um, to determine if there were any prior exclusions in the last three years, I contacted, uh, Inglewood Police Department records via email at records@inglewoodco.gov. Um, they did confirm that he had had multiple exclusions from city property in the last three years, and so I, uh, checked the ninety-day exclusion for a Tier One violation plus multiple exclusions.
Okay, thank you. Um, and does it indicate on the notice of exclusion where Mister Pickering is excluded from?
Uh, it would be in person from Inglewood City Council Chambers, which is just this room, um, for those ninety days.
All right, and is there a relation between where Mister Pickering was excluded and, um, the conduct that he was being excluded for?
Uh, yes, it only applies to where the actual conduct occurred, so, uh, it doesn't prohibit him from going to other areas, uh, unless there's another exclusion in place. Um, so he could, for example, still go to the library or, um, still go to the police department unless there's an exclusion in place. Uh, furthermore, he could also still attend city council meetings via, um, video, um, and during city council meetings, video attendees, uh, are up on the screen on the left of the large screen with the icons on it, um, where he could watch the meeting and, uh, also make public comment, should he so wish.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, no further questions at this time.
All right, thank you. Right, Ms. Pickering, this is your chance, if you'd like to ask questions of the city attorneys just testified. Um, would you like to do that?
Yes, please.
All right, you're welcome to stay there. If that's easier, you can certainly stand up here. Either way, we've got microphones, so, um, your questions will be recorded.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I would like to ask first of all, okay, um, according to your standards of behavior, okay, you, you said that you helped draft these up, okay, um, now, I, I, um, please, so I don't lose my train of thought, okay. You, you said that you had dr- uh, helped draft these up and all that as the attorney for the City of Inglewood, correct?
My office did. Uh, I, I saw the draft, but I didn't, I wasn't the one that actually drafted it. We have several attorneys in our office.
Okay, um, thank you. Anyways, um, now, the day I walked into the city council meeting, on this day when you guys decided that you guys was gonna, uh, uh, basically, um, trespass me, okay, um, was this posted?
Uh, yes, we do have it posted, uh, several locations throughout the city. Uh, our, our posting place legally is, uh, the bulletin board outside of this room, uh, when you walk out here to the left, and it's posted there. Also posted at various locations in and around the city civic center.
Okay, well, 'cause, um, of course, this is only like my second city council meeting I've been to. The first one was over in the common area where, you know, we wasn't allowed to speak or nothing, and then, but this was my first open one that I had ever been to in my life.
Sir, you'll have a chance to testify if you'd like to. Um, right now, you just need to ask her questions.
Okay.
Okay?
And then, um, also, um, huh, and, uh, um, other than reading this, how else would anybody know the standards? I mean, do you guys like mail them out? So people, you know, to people so they, you know, as like, uh, a flyer, so that way the ci- citizens would know because not everybody, for one, not everybody can read, for two, um, you know, uh, not everybody would think to look at a bulletin board. They're coming into a, to a room to, for an activity or whatever, um, and so if it wasn't on the door, you know, to where someone could, oh, hold on, I better read this, you know, how, how would they know? How would they know about what these standards are?
Uh, so we do post it. Uh, it's also on the city website, and, um, I know we do give copies to people when they ask. I, I think that you could probably keep that copy for your own, um, but we don't put it on the, uh, entrance of every interior door, such as, um, council chambers. So you're right, it, it wasn't up on the door.
Okay, and on the, uh, on the video that the young man showed us, okay, um, of, of course, he didn't show like the whole time when I walked through the door to when the mayor actually addressed me, okay? How much time had passed, 'cause, 'cause of course, you could tell by the way I'm, 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 my body movement is, I'm recording from as soon as I walked in the door, okay? Nobody addressed me immediately, said, "Excuse me, sir, you cannot, you know, you must go in the back to record." I've never been here. I don't know that.
Sir, do you have a question for her?
Yeah, yeah. Um, how, how much time was allowed before the mayor decided to address me about this? And I was given, uh, permission to speak when he addressed me.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't know what time you came in the room or when you started recording, so, um, my, my view can often be blocked by this big column right here, uh, and I normally sit on this side of the room. And so I'm, I'm so sorry, but I don't know what time you came in or what time you started recording.
Well, no, the reason why I ask, ma'am, is 'cause there's a timestamp on the videos of when I, I, w- w- when I came in, sat down in the fourth pew back to the time when the mayor had told me I couldn't be there doing that.
I, yes, I believe, um, it was at one hour thirty-six minutes approximately into the video when, um, the mayor noted that, that you were recording.
So it was okay for me to sit there and record for one hour and however many minutes you said, but it was just at that point that it was no longer okay? So it, you know, that'd be kind of double standards, wouldn't it?
Well, I don't know what time you came in the room or what time you started recording. Um, that would have been probably an hour of study session, um, before the audience came in, I assume, but, so I, I don't know what time you started recording and how long it had been before the mayor asked you to stop.
Okay, um, and, and, and one last question, ma'am. Um, you said that I wasn't, uh, given permission to speak. Um, I mean, I, now, I was always taught that when you sp- when you're spoken to to speak, that this, that's giving, you know, like, for example, I'm asking you a question, so I'm kind of giving you permission to speak by expecting a response, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I would say that's, that's accurate for normal social situations. If someone speaks to you, um, it's normal to speak back, but there's different rules for city council meetings. So, um, for example, I don't generally speak until I turn on my microphone that turns on this green light, and sometimes I wave, and, and generally only when the mayor then recognizes me can I speak. Um, so it's, it's different rules in, in a public meeting and a legislative body meeting.
Okay, and, and, um, all right, no, no further question. I apologize.
Okay, no, you're fine. Are you sure you want to take a minute and think? I just want to make sure you have a chance to ask her all the questions you want.
Well, um, I mean, I do, but.
You'll have a chance to testify if you want to.
Well, I, well, see, I, I'm asking questions, but ma'am, but you're saying that I have a chance to testify, but they're actually a question. I, I was hit by a car back in nineteen eighty.
Mm-hmm.
I have a slight mental disability.
Sure, sure.
So my words all run together.
You're doing, you're doing a great job.
Right, right. So, but earlier I was, I was getting around to asking her a question, but I was giving her like, uh, a foundation of where the question's coming from, and you told me I had a chance to testify later, you know?
Right.
So that, so that kind of like, you know, uh, messes me up in the head a little bit to where I lose train of thought a little bit.
Of course. That's why I want to make sure you have ample time to think about any questions that you have. So are there other questions that you want to ask her other than what you've covered?
Well, yeah, I wanted to ask her if, uh, if she's, uh, if she knows what the Constitution of the United States of America says because by, by me asking her this, ma'am, I, I would like to please specify, thank you, um, because the Constitution for one says that no law shall be passed, no, no law, rule, regulation, nothing that violates any of our constitutional rights, and especially the first ten constitutional rights. And there's several Supreme Court, uh, rulings saying that you cannot trespass somebody from public property without committing a crime, okay? And they also said that you cannot, uh, criminalize the Constitution of the United States of America.
And so.
And as a lawyer, I would think she would know that, and she would be advising the city from that. So, did, did, did you not take an oath to oppose the Constitution of the United States of America?
Uh, yes, I have taken an oath to that effect in the past. Uh, I, I will say, and I think this may be what you were, um, the question you were trying to formulate, I do advise the City of Inglewood and city council on constitutional issues and their compliance with constitutional issues.
Because, well, ma'am, okay, um, because I, you know, initially, I, I, I lived in Inglewood seven years, okay? It wasn't until the last three years that I wanted to come around and meet my local, uh, government, you know, my mayor, my, all that, okay? So I come up, but of course, I'm on video because it's my first time, you know? It means something to me. I'm a proud American, you know, and so therefore, you know, I, I, uh, you know, I come to, you know, and, and then also, it's like, okay, the Constitution says so much. It says we have a right to do checks and balances, correct? To our local officials.
Um, the Constitution doesn't say that for local government. Um, there's no constitutional checks and balances requirement for municipalities.
Well, I, actually, ma'am, there's.
Sir, I'm gonna, I, I'm just gonna.
I, I apologize.
Okay, no, no, you're fine. All right, any redirect?
Just three or four questions.
Okay.
Uh, hello again, Ms. Niles. I'm just gonna ask two or three clarifying questions. It shouldn't take more than a minute or two. Um, so you testified with regard to, um, public access to the standards of behavior. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, and can you just say, to your knowledge, where all the standards of behavior are posted publicly?
I can't tell you every location. I know there's, uh, they're posted in the library, they're posted on our, uh, public notice bulletin board outside in the lobby, um, here on this floor. They're posted throughout city facilities, all city parks.
Are they posted online as well?
Yes.
Okay, and to your knowledge, as a longtime attorney, as well as the city attorney of Inglewood, is somebody exempt from complying with the city rule or policy if they're unaware of that policy?
Uh, no.
All right, thank you. Um, no further questions.
All right, thank you. All right. City have any further witnesses?
Uh, no, we're not, sir.
All right.
May, may I ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead. You can do it from right there.
Um, where's the, uh, the notification for videoing on the door for this facility? Because it wasn't there that night.
Um.
And in, in fact, there was no instruction whatsoever about where you can and can't, uh, that night. There, there was no instruction on where you can and can't. Now, if you looked around the room, okay, to actually physically look at the table, but I didn't even know that table was there. You know what I'm saying? I was outside looking in the window, never saw that table there.
Yeah, um, I, I can't tell you what notices were posted on the door because I don't come in that door. I come in the back door. Um, but I think that's why the mayor asked you to stop recording or to go to the back of the room, uh, because it is a fairly new policy. It's only been in effect a couple of months. So, um, the mayor has, has taken the approach that if someone's violating it, he will just ask for compliance. And so I think that's what he was trying to do, just to let you know that, um, this is our policy, so you can either stop recording or just go to the back of the room and record from there.
Now, you, you, now, you mentioned policy, ma'am. The, the, the policy's normally for the people that work for you, correct? Not, not the general public.
Uh, not necessarily.
Well, 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 see, because we, we as the general public, we have to follow law, okay? You as a, as a city employee have to follow city policies, see? So that's, that's where a lot of the confusion's getting, I, I feel is getting to be at because everybody thinks that I have to follow their policies. I don't. I have to follow the law, ma'am. I'm a free citizen. I'm, I'm not a public servant, you know, I'm not in the public eye, all that, you know, you know what I'm saying? Policies are, are created for you guys by whoever, by whoever. Policies are, are created for you guys by whoever, by whoever above you made them, okay? Law is made for everybody, including the citizens.
So I think you make a good point, there are employment policies that the City of Inglewood adopts that all employees have to follow. But City Council adopts policies to maybe fill in some gaps, to adopt some regulations that perhaps municipal code doesn't speak to. So for example, when it comes to public comment, municipal code says that City Council will establish the parameters of public comment. And so they have done that through a document called City Council Policies where they lay out, um, public comment, you have to sign up, give your, your name and cross streets or location information, three minutes, ninety minutes total. So that's a City Council policy that people giving, um, public comment have to comply with. So they have the authority to create regulations regarding time, place, and manner of public comment, for example. Or to maintain order within the City Council meeting or ensure there's not a safety hazard like a video camera cord walk, going across an entrance that could trip somebody. So that's what one of those policies is, is so that people, um, behind you, their view isn't blocked when someone's recording and so that you're not in front of a door or blocking an aisle so that people can leave or if there's a fire, it's ingress and egress aren't blocked. So that's, that's a, a regulation to maintain order within the, the council chambers.
Okay, now, now, does policy trump law?
No, law trumps policy.
Okay.
With the, some caveats, because not all laws apply to Inglewood and Inglewood laws don't apply outside of Inglewood.
Constitutional law applies to everybody.
It does.
Okay, so Constitution says that I had a right to film, I had a right to be in this room to film. It didn't say, you had to be in the back of the room, the Constitution, it says I have a right to film my, uh, my public officials of all, uh, levels in the acts of their duties.
I, I don't agree with your, your legal conclusion there.
No, no.
I mean, there's, there's quite a few nuances.
And, and that's the purpose of the hearing.
Right.
That's the purpose of the hearing. So city attorney says she disagrees with that, which is fine, and you have your position, which is fine. So I'm gonna make a decision as to whether the city is proven by preponderance of the evidence that you did in fact violate that provision. So I'm gonna ask you to move on, do you have any other questions of the city attorney?
No.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Niles. All right, um, I've noted the city has no further witnesses. Mr. Pickering, this is your chance, if you'd like, to testify, you don't have to testify. It has to be your own decision, nobody can force or coerce you to testify. If you do testify, you'll take an oath to tell the truth, like any other witness, and then you can just let me know what you want me to consider. You're welcome to stay seated if you'd like to. If you testify, likely the, um, city will ask questions of you under cross-examination like you just asked of the city attorney. Do you have any questions about your right to testify?
No, ma'am.
You have the right to remain silent, nobody can force you to testify. I will decide the case based on the evidence I have before me, which is the testimony of the city attorney and these two, three exhibits, the exclusion order, the standards of behavior, and then the video of the council session. And I can't infer anything by your decision not to testify. Do you know what you'd like to do?
Well, I mean, I don't want to testify, but I know if I don't, I'm gonna lose anyway because of the fact that I'm not giving you anything to, uh, to go off of.
Well, I will make my decision based on the evidence I have before me. I haven't made a decision, I don't know what my decision is gonna be, and I can't, if you decide not to testify, you're simply exercising that right to remain silent. So I can't find or hold that you're hiding anything. I, I just decide what I have before me, um, based on the evidence. So you're welcome to testify, again, it has to be your own free and voluntary decision. And nobody can force you to testify, so whatever you decide to do has to be your sole decision.
No, I'm, I'm fine, your honor.
Okay, you don't want to testify, okay. All right, um, are there any witnesses that you would like to call to testify on your own behalf?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir. City have closing argument?
Yes. A hearing officer as injures myself, my name is Nathan Cash, I'm representing the City of Inglewood in this matter. And if I haven't entered my appearance officially, my registration number is five nine three six seven. On October twenty-first, during a City Council public comment session, Mr. Pickering engaged in disruptive behavior, the basis of which, which was the basis of finding of violations of the standards of behavior. Specifically, Mr. Pickering was issued a notice of exclusion, which excludes him from the city council chambers for ninety days based on the fact that he has mul, had multiple prior exclusions and that he committed a tier-one violation of the standards of behavior. As you've indicated, hearing officer, the city's burden today is to demonstrate by a preponderance of the evidence that the person issued the exclusion committed the specified rule violation and that the issuance, duration, and conditions of the exclusion are lawful. I will begin by discussing the specified rule violations, go on to the duration and issuance of the exclusion notice, and then end of the brief discussion of the First Amendment implications of the exclusion notice. Mr. Pickering was charged with, or had, the exclusion notice indicated that Mr. Pickering had interfered with the normal use or operation of a city facility by another. Pursuant to the standards of behavior and the exclusion notice itself, this is a tier-one violation of disruptive activity and behavior. As the video and Ms. Niles' testimony showed, Mr. Pickering was not making public comment, he was not called or authorized to make public comment, and that he was videoing the room in violation of a city policy. However, Mr. Pickering's exclusion was not based on his violation of the city policy, it was based on what happened after. The mayor who Ms. Niles testified is the official authorized with maintaining order in accordance with city policies in city council meetings, asked Mr. Pickering to comply with the city's policy. Mr. Pickering continuously refused. Additionally, he walked forward towards, from the podium, towards where you're sitting now, hearing officer, and continued to loudly argue and interrupt and disrupt the city council meeting. As the video demonstrates, as a result, a recess of approximately ten minutes had to be taken, during which Inglewood Police Department had to escort Mr. Pickering out of the building. This clearly demonstrates behavior as a violation of the city's standards of behavior, whether Mr. Pickering was aware of these standards of behavior or not, that occurred within the city council chambers, which is city policy violates a rule. And the city has met its burden to show a bribe of ponderance of the evidence that this rule violation was made. Additionally, Mr. Pickering was noted that he violated, um, two criminal laws, one being CRS eighteen nine one ten three, as well as Colorado Revise Statute eighteen nine one ten four. This was marked as a tier-one violation, but as you heard in testimony and can see from the standards of behavior themselves, this would support a tier-two violation as well. Colorado Revise Statute eighteen nine one ten three states that "A person shall not willfully refuse or fail to leave any public building upon request by the chief administrative officer or their designee charged with maintaining order in such public building. If the person has committed, is committing, threatens to commit, or incites others to commit any acts which did or would, if completed, disrupt, impair, interfere with, or obstruct the lawful missions, processes, procedures, or functions being carried out in the public building." It is undisputed that the city council chambers are a public building. And Mr. Pickering, regardless of whether he knew of the standards of behavior themselves, knew that he was being asked to stop speaking by the mayor, who at through testimony we have heard is the authorized official in this case, charged with maintaining order in this public building. Further, as a result of this, as I've stated, there is over a ten-minute disruption to the meeting, which, as you also heard from testimony from Ms. Niles, this disruption did not cease upon Mr. Pickering's own volition, he had to be escorted out by the Inglewood Police Department. Thus, all of these elements are met, and the city has shown by a preponderance of the evidence that this rule violation was committed by Mr. Pickering. And finally, Colorado Revise Statute eighteen nine one ten four requires that "A person shall not, at any meeting or session conducted by any judicial, legislative, or administrative body or official, at or in any public building, willfully impede, disrupt, or hinder the normal proceedings of such meeting or session by any act of intrusion into the chamber or other areas designated for use of the body or official conducting the meeting or session, or by any act designed to intimidate, coerce, or hinder any member of such body or official engaged in the performance of the duties of such meeting or session." So, once again, without having to reiterate all the facts, Mr. Pickering was at a public meeting, it was being conducted by an administrative body or official, the mayor. And he knew that he was interrupting the mayor, he knew he was not authorized to speak pursuant to the city's, um, public comment policy. However, he continued to disrupt the meeting until police removed him. Further, his coming from the podium to the front of the building near the city council members, the mayor himself, could easily be construed as intimidation, coercion, or a threat. Thus, we have also shown by a preponderance of the evidence that this rule violation was committed. Now, hearing officer, as I've explained, only one of these three rule violations has to be shown by a preponderance of the evidence to support the exclusion notice that was given to Mr. Pickering. As he has had multiple prior exclusions, the ninety-day exclusion period is relevant regardless if rather he committed a tier-one or a tier-two violation. Thus, if you find that we have shown by a preponderance of the evidence that he committed any of these rule violations, then the exclusion from property is proper. Further, briefly touching on the issuance and duration of the exclusion notice, all requirements set forth by the Inglewood Code have been met. You heard testimony that an authorized official, an Inglewood police officer, issued this exclusion notice. Also, as you can see by examining Exhibit One, the exclusion notice includes the date of issuance, the term not to exceed ninety days, which it does not, the location of the exclusion, specifically the second floor in the city council chambers of this building. It provides an allowance and exception to enter as necessary to conduct legitimate city business. Further, it identifies three specific rules under which are demonstrated by the standards of behavior that Mr. Pickering violated. It contains a lengthy statement of credible evidence of the rule violation. It also gave Mr. Pickering the notice of the right and process to appeal, which he is exercising today. Further, it states that if Mr. Pickering does not comply with the exclusion notice, that he may be subject to a charge for trespass. Thus, because the exclusion is in writing, signed by an authorized official, and contains all of these things, its issuance is proper, and because the term does not exceed ninety days and the ninety-day exclusion would be supported regardless if rather a tier-one or a tier-two violation was committed based on Mr. Pickering's prior exclusions, the duration is proper as well. Finally, we have heard Mr. Pickering ask questions about and bring up his First Amendment rights. Now, in public forms such as this one, content-neutral regulations are permissible when they restrict only the time, manner, and place of speech, are narrowly tailored to serve a significant government interest, and leave open ample alternative channels of communication. All three of these problems are easily met by the policy excluding Mr. Pickering in this instance.
Do you have the case on that you're citing?
Yes, hearing officer, um, it is Verlo v. Martinez.
And the site?
Um, eight twenty F dot three D.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Oh, eight twenty, eight two zero, F, period, three lowercase d, um, and the page number is one 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 three.
And, um, litigants in that case?
Yes, I can get that information for you.
Okay, great.
And that was from the Tenth Circuit in two thousand and sixteen. But pursuant to this case and other binding case law on the Tenth Circuit and at the Supreme Court as well, these types of restrictions are permissible. The exclusion notice restricts only the place that Mr. Pickering is allowed to speak. If he wishes to still attend city council meetings, you have heard, um, testimony that he is allowed to do so virtually. He's allowed to make public comment virtually. He is allowed to lawfully engage as a citizen under his First Amendment rights in this public body pursuant to those conditions. Further, pursuant to the exception, any First Amendment, um, potential First Amendment violation is remedied because of the exception which states he is allowed to be here for any official business. As such, because this is a narrowly tailored regulation that applies only to the place where Mr. Pickering has had a pattern of being disruptive, it is tailored to serve the significant government interest of preventing disruptions to public meetings and allowing for others to exercise their First Amendment rights in an orderly manner. And ample alternative channels of communication are open for Mr. Pickering to convey the message he wishes to, to the government and even the city council meetings themselves. His exclusion has not posed any First Amendment concerns. So in conclusion, the city has today met its burden, shown a preponderance of the evidence, Mr. Pickering has met, um, committed three rule violations, any one of which would have supported his exclusion. Further, Mr. Pickering was not excluded for violating the policy but for what happened after in his disruption of the mayor pursuant to the city rules. And finally, even if you do find, hearing officer, that there was some sort of error with his exclusion notice, the remedy pursuant to the Inglewood municipal code would be to modify the exclusion notice to bring it into compliance with law and not to reverse the exclusion notice outright. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pickering, any closing arguments, sir?
Yes, ma'am. For starters, okay, um, the gentleman was saying that, uh, about how I'm, I'm allowed to be here, you know, all that, okay? But what he didn't say, what he didn't say is that I was sitting there peacefully, the video shows, ma'am. I was sitting there peacefully, wasn't saying nothing to nobody, wasn't even speaking until I was spoken to. I had no intention of speaking, I didn't sign up to speak. I was sitting there doing a perfectly, uh, uh, constitutional-protected activity, okay? Not speaking to nobody, not, they could see it was a cell phone, there was no cords. So all these policies and stuff that they're trying to cite on me, that they're trying to charge me with, is fraudulent, illegal, and they haven't proven anything other than the fact that they trespassed me without committing a crime. And you can look up, near any Supreme Court decisions about that, and it'll say unless there's a crime committed, you cannot be trespassed from public property, period. And that's, that's all this exclusion is, ma'am, is a trespass. They just want to write it up and give it a different name so that we can say, we're not violating nobody because it's not a trespass. But if you're removed from public property and told under threat of arrest, if you return, you will be locked up, that's a trespass by any other definition and, and by any other name. So therefore, my First Amendment rights do apply here because I was sitting there peacefully filming my local officials in the, in the act of their duties according to the Constitution. So, I mean, I, I guess I, I guess I'm done with that.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right, sir, thank you. Any rebuttal?
I know.
All right. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. And you were gonna give me that flash drive, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure I definitely see it yet, all right. All right, um, Ms. Pickering, I, there's no address on, oh, here we go, we do have an address. Okay, I'm required to issue a written order, I will issue that written order. I get that to the city clerk's office, they will provide a copy to you. Do you have any questions for the hearing officer regarding this particular matter?
I don't, ma'am, like I said, this is my first time going through any of this. Unfortunately, I didn't have counsel today. It just, I mean, I, I don't really have any questions, but I have a statement, if you don't mind.
You just made your statement. So I got your statement. Let's talk about the continued hearing date for the, um, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four matter. Let me look at my availability. The next available date that I have is November fifteenth, which is two weeks from today.
You said fifteen?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's in two weeks, it's also, obviously, Friday. Ms. Pickering, would that work for you?
I believe so, ma'am.
Okay. And from the city?
Yes, that should work.
Okay, all right, so let's, we'll reschedule that hearing November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and start at ten AM this time. All right, does the city have any questions for the hearing officer?
No, hearing officer, just to note that if you would like any sort of supplemental briefing on First Amendment issues, we'd be happy to provide them.
I would like a copy of the case that you cited, eight-twenty of third, eleven fifteen.
I'll download a PDF and put that on the flash drive as well.
That would be great, okay, thank you. Ms. Pickering, any questions for me before we adjourn the hearing?
No, ma'am.
Sir, did you, were you able to make a note of that hearing date, so it can land in your calendar?
Eleven fifteen, twenty-twenty-four, at ten AM.
Yes, sir. And the reason I want to confirm, we will not send out a new notice of hearing, so you won't get anything in the mail. That's why I want to make sure that you've got that.
And what location would that be at?
Right here, it'll be right here. It'll be very much the same format, you'll have the chance to ask questions of any witnesses, and you'll have the right to testify as well. All right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we'll be in recess, thank you. Okay, make sure...